Good evening, we'd like to welcome you to our February 7th, 2019 Town Council Meeting. Thank you all for being here this evening. We are grateful for Councilmember Peterson and invite her to introduce her guest tonight.
Thank you Mayor. We don't happen to have any scouts in the audience this evening, so I happened to find Mary from MYAC, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Group, and so she goes to Highland High School, and she said she would be happy to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America- ...and to your republic, our representative states, one nation, united, individual, with a vision of justice, law-
Thank you, Mary. Have a great rest of your night. I think she gets bonus points for that, Mayor.
Mary always gets bonus points, that's just who she is, so, thank you, Mary. It's my pleasure to introduce Rabbi Sheeman Ash of our Shabbat Jewish Gilbert Jewish Center. Rabbi, would you be so kind as to offer our invocation this evening? I was hoping you'd bring some of your children and your wife, but we're grateful you're here.
We could all rise. Just making sure everyone gets their exercise up and down. Almighty God, who opens your hand and satisfies the desire of every living thing, who provides even for young ravens that call out, and who sustained your people for forty years on bread from the sky, we pray for those who are now in need, and for the mayor and city council members who are charged with making laws to promote the general welfare and security to the residents of this great town of Gilbert, and the blessings of liberty. Immediately after the spectacular headline-grabbing story of your splitting of the Red Sea comes one that is far less spectacular, but surely much greater. For forty years, day in and day out, you provided your people with two squares a day before bringing them to a land where they could provide for themselves. The moment they entered this land, you cut them off from their supply, and they began eating the local produce. We ask your guidance for our mayor and city council members that they too can find the right balance between looking after those who need it and discouraging dependency among those who don't. We remember also that you provided this bounty of your own infinite resources, not at the expense of anyone else. Our legislators are not miracle workers, but we ask you to help them find those solutions to people's problems that impose the least possible burden on others. Finally, we ask you not to overlook our mayor and city council members' own needs for peace of mind and satisfaction in the work. Let us say amen.
Thank you Rabbi, and thank you for all the work that you're doing in Gilbert. At this time, the clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels-
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook-
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson-
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson-
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray-
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor-
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes-
Here.
The Quorum of the 70.
Thank you all, we have a very special presentation tonight that we're just thrilled about. What a remarkable holiday season we had in the town of Gilbert, and anecdotally, I get to see this community from a really unique perspective, and I see kindness and giving in every corner of the town of Gilbert, no more or no less present this year as it was in our heritage district. I'm sure many of you experienced the Giving Machines, and it's a privilege to be able to welcome those visitors who participated in that effort. Really remarkable, and I'm excited for you to hear more about that. So I'd like to introduce Elder Dale Willis. Dale, will you please come forward? Thank you Dale. Dale is a member of the Quorum of the Seventy and Area Authority, is that correct?
Correct.
And we're just really privileged to have him here this night, and I will pass this mic to you.
Thank you Mayor Daniels. It's a great honor for me to represent the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints here this evening. Each Christmas, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints celebrates the life of Jesus Christ through the Light the World Campaign. The Popular Light the World Campaign asks people to take time leading up to Christmas and turn it in a season of service, lifting and helping others in small and simple ways. As part of the Light the World Campaign, people had a chance to provide an instant act of service at special vending machines called Giving Machines. I would like to thank the town of Gilbert for their support for the Light the World Giving Machines, and we are here tonight to present local charities with donations from these Giving Machines that were located at the Water Tower Plaza here in Gilbert. During the thirty-eight days of the Light the World Giving Machines Campaign, the following amounts were donated throughout the world. In Salt Lake City, $1,279,927 was given out of forty-eight thousand transactions. Here in Gilbert, $862,120 were given out of thirty-four thousand transactions. New York City, $131,842. Manila, Philippines, $15,041. And then in London, England, $20,912 in fourteen hundred transactions. That totals $2,309,844 that was given during this Christmas season. One hundred percent of the donations will be used for the purchased item or similar items of service of greater need as determined by applicable charitable organizations. Administrative costs for this campaign, as well as the credit card costs associated with its nonprofit partners, were covered by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We look forward to the continued expansion of the Light the World Giving Machine Campaign in the years to come. I'd like to introduce Brother Greg Droubay of the Missionary Department in Salt Lake, and he has some individuals that he would like to introduce.
Thank you, we are very pleased to be here tonight, and I want to thank the town of Gilbert for really the remarkable outpouring of love and service that was offered. The only reason Gilbert did not take in more than Salt Lake City is you had one less machine. I'm a hundred percent confident if there'd been another machine here, you would have beat Salt Lake City. The lasting takeaway I take in from my time in Gilbert was the very first day the machines were open, and to watch families coming, and mothers and fathers with young children, and the teaching opportunity that these machines and this effort has provided parents to teach young children the importance and the value and the feel-good nature of giving. So again, thank you to the town and to the mayor, and I also wanted just to offer a personal thank you to Denise Merton from the town that played such an instrumental role in making all this happen. I don't know if she's here tonight, but if she was, she ought to receive a round of applause for her work. So I'd like to introduce, we had three of our church missions involved. We've got President Lauder representing the Gilbert Mission here with us, President Ash representing the Mesa Mission, and I don't know if President Christensen came in or not. But we have a gift that we'd like to present to the town. Get out of the way here. This artwork that we'll present to the city. Oh, thank you. All right. Well, stand off to the side here. Well, they're coming down. This was created here locally in the town of Gilbert. This piece of art that we're donating is a thank you for the remarkable contribution of this community, was been created from two of the panels that were on the Giving Machine. The artist used it, used parts of the machines, brushed aluminum, acrylic raised lettering and a glass picture that really captures some of the remarkable acts of service that occurred. So we'd like to invite Elder Willis and the mayor to unveil the piece. Okay, and now the most important part, and that is the donations. I'll turn it back to Elder Willis here. Want to get the pictures right now?
I would love to.
Please.
Lauren, you want to take one? Lauren, you want to take one?
Yes, thanks.
I like how you do that.
This is how it feels for all the students.
Okay, right here, one, two, three. Thank you.
Right here, really quick, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Teamwork, right.
Well, the important part of the program now has come. We'd like to invite Mr. Mike Hughes, President and CEO of A New Leaf nonprofit organization. Out of the proceeds that were raised, we'd like to present A New Leaf Organization $60,980. Congratulations. And a token of our appreciation, here's a gift for you too. Thank you.
These are the actual cards that came out of the machine. So they have their own set of cards out of the vending machine.
These are the actual cards that came out of the vending machine, so congratulations, Mike. Appreciate you, thank you. Oh. Yes, thank you, thank you. Next, Katie Pompey, we'd like to invite Katie up, which is the Executive Director of Helen's Hope Chest in Mesa. We have a check for Helen's Hope Chest for $54,410. Congratulations. And here's your cards out of the machine too. Thank you. Next, next, Mr. Tom Curtis, who's the President and CEO of St. Mary's Food Bank Alliance. We'd like to invite Mike, or Tom up, I'm sorry. The check that we'd like to present, St. Mary's Food Bank, is for $67,196.50. Congratulations. And your cards, thank you, thank you so much. And finally, I'd like to invite Dave Richens to come forward, who is the President and CEO of United Food Bank. His check is made out in the amount of $67,196.50. Congratulations. Mayor, in conclusion, tonight, we just want to thank you as well as all the citizens of the town of Gilbert for your kindness and love that they showed during Christmas, the Christmas season. We know that many citizens in Arizona came and participated in these gifting machines. My children, we all as a family participated in it, and a few of us had to wait a long, long time to get our turn. Denny Barney told me tonight, he was the first one after the ribbon was cut to swipe his card, or his wife did that, so, he beat the crowd. But again, thank you all for your willingness to participate in this and to support this great effort as we bless the lives of the members of our community. Congratulations.
It really was a tremendous honor to have the Giving Machines in Gilbert, and I'm so grateful to the four charities who partnered to make this happen, because you gave our residents, and it wasn't just our residents, but surrounding areas, the opportunity and individuals. I had lots of mayors say to me, "How did you get the Giving Machines?" I don't really know the answer as to why they chose Gilbert. I have some suspicions or speculation, but it's probably a bias on my part to even say. But really, more than anything, thank you for giving our residents this opportunity to give and to share. I'll share one quick thing. When Desert Industries opened in the town of Gilbert just a few months ago, Bishop Davies came from Salt Lake. He's what they call a member of the Presiding Bishop Rec, which is really in charge of so many of the church welfare programs and the opportunities to give and to serve there. And he left a really incredible blessing on the town of Gilbert as part of his dedicatori prayer, and the Giving Machines, just to sum it up, is actually a manifestation of those blessings that he left on our community. So thank you very much, and thank you to every single individual who served. As a token of our appreciation, we wanted you to have our Gilbert Coin. We wanted you to have this as really a reminder that the town of Gilbert is a community of kindness, and all of you who participated, thank you. And there's more kindness to come, although we know many of you that came for this opportunity probably would need to leave, but we have one other presentation to give tonight, and I invite Councilmember Yentes down to do that part of our agenda. So if you need to leave, we're not offended, we know there's lots of commitments on a Thursday night.
Thank you Mayor, yes, this is pretty exciting, we get to continue the spirit of generosity. And I have the distinct pleasure to recognize the efforts and also generosity of Gilbert Police Department's Blue Line of Love Toy Drive. They embarked on a toy drive over the Christmas holidays, and obviously, all those efforts were going toward the needy families in Gilbert, and they had a very successful toy drive. And I want to introduce a couple members of the team who will do a little bit more of a deep dive into their actual success stories. Crime Specialist Officer Vicky Faber, Chief Solberg and Sergeant Josh Fearno, if you can come join me up here and share with the residents what a successful toy drive you guys had.
Thanks so much, Honorable Mayor and Council. Thankfully, you know, we had such a great outpour of the Gilbert community to help us this year. The Gilbert Police Department has run the Blue Line of Love Police Toy Drive for the last fifteen years, and over the last three, we actually were able to partner with our Gilbert and Higley Public School District, the McKinney-Vento families. McKinney-Vento families are those individual families who have been designated as their income level and their home situation as being considered homeless. So we, together with Police Department, families that we have come in contact with throughout the year, had been able to provide them with much-needed assistance all throughout the holiday season, not only in giving toys for their family, but we also had a lot of home goods as well, which many of you know that sometimes food stamps don't provide that, so we were able to help them in that way too. So tonight, we're really happy, we have a few of those businesses in Gilbert that did some special activities, so it wasn't only just all of the Gilbert residents that helped, but these special businesses that did these special projects too that really came through for the toy drive, and we wanted to just recognize them. First of all, do we have Sal and Grace Caffaro in the house? There they are. Come on up, Grace. Sal and Grace helped to feed all of the folks that had to wrap the gifts and deliver the gifts. The special opportunity for gift-giving from us is that we actually try to deliver it. A Police Department employee delivers that gift to those families. So, Grace? Do a picture. Thanks a lot, Grace. Sal is back at the restaurant making pizzas, so. We have Emily Moyers from the Starbucks Coffee, which by the way, she left a donation of Starbucks coffee for everyone tonight in the lobby. Emily, thank you so much. Her Starbucks is on power. Walter Yu was the former manager who has moved to another location, but Emily's here to accept this certificate. All right. Our next presentation is for Gilbert Christian School. Mrs. Howell is here accepting on behalf of the principal. We have a special arrangement with Gilbert Christian School as well, they have the Adopt a Cop Program there too, so many of their children have individual officers that they are assigned to, so they have a good mentorship with the Police Department. Thank you so much, Mrs. Howell. Our next presentation is to April Gold. Is April here? April Gold runs a unique program of yoga, goat yoga. If any of you have ever heard it, they do yoga and have goats climb all over them, but they were one of the businesses that hosted a donation box. To Be Claimed Services, we have Richard Blake, who is the owner, and Patrick PJ SkiLo, if they could please come up. Out of the blue, they delivered a truckload of toys, having a competition at their business. Selena Partee from District Lofts. Rebecca Hill, accepting for the Power Ranch Community. Thanks so much for coming, Rebecca. They have a wonderful community down there. Bridges Elementary. Staff Sergeant Ronald Warner and his future soldiers, I know that they're here. This is a wonderful recruiting office on Williams Field that he got his future soldiers to participate, and they held several toy drives, but they delivered them all in backpacks from his office, marching, which is wonderful. Helen Stinson. Helen and the Bolero group across the street have several leagues, and Helen got her group together, along with the General Manager Dan Byrd and Lois Cataro, and provided truckloads of toys that night for several days in a row, and we so appreciate all of their efforts. Thank you so much, Helen. Helen is actually late for her league night tonight, so she has to run. Next, I have John Saggy and Chelsea Foss representing Morgan Stanley Offices. These two young individuals had a competition among their employees at Morgan Stanley, and gathered many truckloads of gifts and assisted in delivering as well, so I know they're here. Come on up, guys. That concludes our presentation for tonight. Chief, did you have a word to say?
They always make me say something. I just want to say thank you. It was kind of overwhelming when you saw how many toys and bikes, and when we got the list to fill the orders, when you see it, you're like, man- And when we got the list to fill the orders, when you see it, you're like, man, there's a lot of stuff. But even after we filled all those orders, and we still had leftovers to give to the community. But it's just overwhelming how much, as we saw in the previous presentation, of how much our community gives. And it's humbling to see. And thank you to everyone who was here tonight and everyone else who donated. We had families, kids, old and young, for coming in constantly and dropping off toys. And for the business communities who provide the boxes and allow them to donate to your locations, we really appreciate it. So thank you.
We'll just give a couple minutes to do some transitions here. That will move us to our communications from citizens. Thank you for tonight. We appreciate it. Vice Mayor?
At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Mayor, we have two individuals that would like to speak. We'd like to invite Victoria Stallings to the podium. Victoria, if you can come up, introduce yourself and place a residence. We'll give you three minutes to share your thoughts with the council. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Stallings, and Gilbert has been my home for 30 years. I would like to comment on the town ordinance that was quietly passed last May with very little public input. Ordinance 2664 prohibits feeding of wild or feral animals on town-owned property or public right-of-ways unless the Parks and Recreation Director authorizes for purpose of animal rescue, rehabilitation, or management. An unspayed female cat and offspring can produce 450,000 kittens in seven years. The Trap Neuter Return Program was a proactive approach to minimize the growth of feral cat colonies. Gilbert has a community of volunteers committed to the TNR program that have been actively managing cat colonies in our town for up to 15 years and longer, possibly longer than many of you have been on the town council. These community members have volunteered their time, energy, and financial resources to minimize the feral cat growth in Gilbert through TNR. The commitment of TNR requires these volunteers to continually lightly feed the cats. These compassionate, kind, hard-working volunteers are from all walks of life: homemakers, retired teachers, postal workers, business owners, financial advisors, individuals with special needs, airline workers, veterans, and more. You cannot imagine the frustration and confusion they felt when the town council passed the ordinance, which directly impacts the commitment they have honored for years. Let us not be a town that withholds foods from defenseless, homeless, feral cats and kittens while placing outrageous fines on those community volunteers who have committed to help minimize the cat colony through TNR. Three cups of cat food on a curb on a side street that will be eaten in 15 minutes by a cat colony will generate a $245 fine, unless you get a reduced fine of $100. The second fine is $500. The third fine is $996. What a waste of taxpayers' resources. Those three fines together could neuter and space 70 cats, not to mention our police force, who have far more important things to do with their time. TNR is a proactive maintenance program for feral cats, and yet the Parks and Recreation Director has not given anyone permission to continue the TNR program on our town or in the parks. On behalf of all the community volunteers, we are asking the town council to rescind Ordinance 2664. It is not a kind ordinance for Gilbert, and there has been no transparency from its beginning. Our town ordinance needs to reflect the kindness this town is nicknamed for, Kindness USA. Mayor and Town Council, we call on you to raise the bar on kindness. Rescind Ordinance 2664 and allow our community volunteers to complete the work they started years ago in reducing and managing the feral cat population in Gilbert. Thank you.
We'd like to invite Paul Rodriguez. Paul, if you can introduce yourself and place a residence, we'll allow you three minutes to share your thoughts with the council.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council people, my name is Paul Rodriguez. I'm a Gilbert resident. I also would appreciate it if the council would repeal or rescind the Ordinance 2664. Yesterday was former President Ronald Reagan's 108th birthday. President Reagan, true to his conservative principles, believed that individuals should own up to their responsibilities, spend their own money, address problems that they can address. The feral cats and homeless cats in Gilbert have benefited from that very spirit coming from Gilbert residents. With the permission of the council, I'd like to quote President Reagan directly. "The work of volunteer groups throughout our country represents the very heart and soul of America." "They have helped make this the most compassionate, generous, and humane society that ever existed on the face of this earth." I think President Reagan hit it right on the nose. Each of us has a responsibility to do what he or she can for the betterment of his or her community. Nobody has asked me to do the work, the volunteer work I do. I do it because it just comes from some inner motivation. But I'm a results-oriented person. It doesn't really matter to me what one's motivation is, as long as you do the work. I would appreciate it if the council and the mayor would please reconsider this ordinance, because it has the potential to do a great deal of harm. A lot of hard work was done to clean up downtown Gilbert. I talked to a woman who said she used to jog through downtown, and the stench from cat urine was so bad, she and her girlfriends had to find another place to jog. She tells me that now they can jog through downtown Gilbert. Unfortunately, the progress will be reversed unless the council reconsiders this ordinance. Thank you for your undivided attention. Good night.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, we will move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor, are there requests to pull items?
Yes, Mayor, two of them. We're going to pull 3A and 12.
Thank you. We will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 3 with change in adding the word "year." Agenda Items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. I think I heard you say yea, yes. Councilmember Ray?
Right.
Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 3A. We have one request to speak on this agenda item, but I think it might be appropriate. Jennifer, if you come to the podium, is that all right, if I call you out?
Jennifer has put a tremendous amount of effort into the University Building. We have a tremendous partner in Park University. I'm grateful for their ongoing commitment to higher ed in the town of Gilbert. It's been very remarkable to get to know Park University. And I think tonight, we have another announcement through Agenda Item 3A, if you'd like to help us with that.
Sure, I'd be delighted to. Mayor, members of council, tonight before you, Item 3A is a lease agreement with the University of Arizona for a term of three years, and they will be occupying the third floor of the Gilbert University Building and bringing in their Bachelor of Science in Nursing program to Gilbert, Arizona.
Pretty exciting.
It is pretty exciting. Yeah, I know, I'm very, very excited.
Thank you. And I did see both Joel Huff and Buchanan Davis from University of Arizona here. Thank you for being here tonight and for representing that fine institution. I'm excited for this vote tonight. It's been a long time coming and something we're really looking forward to. Jennifer, you and the rest of Economic Development have worked really hard on this. I think I saw the wave at one point from some of the audience. Yep, I see a couple U of A grads back there.
I know, they're very, very excited. Well, I would just like to thank you, Mayor, members of council, as well as Patrick, the legal staff, and the whole team for their support on this project as well. It's been a really, really fun ride and a really, really fun adventure to work both with the University of Arizona as well as Park University on this initiative. And it's very exciting to have higher education growing here in Gilbert. So I'm delighted to be here with you tonight.
I understand there may have been a little tension in the Economic Development Office between a U of A grad and then another Arizona University grad.
That is correct. But we don't recognize that this evening, because we're here to celebrate the University of Arizona.
There's a clear winner.
There's a clear winner. Yes, I agree.
It's actually the town of Gilbert. We are the clear winner.
It is the clear winner, yes, yes. Except I will say, though, that Economic Development Director Henderson has said that I cannot put bear down on the University Building, but I will figure it out.
Here, 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 here.
So you will find that somewhere, I promise.
Love it. Well, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. And with that, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, we have a special guest here from Park University. We'd like to invite Jeff Erlich to come to the podium. Jeff, if you can just introduce yourself and place a residence.
Sure.
And we'll allow you three minutes to speak.
Great. My name is Dr. Jeff Erlich, resident of Gilbert. Thank you, Mayor Daniels, Town Council. Good evening to all. Park University has enjoyed seven months of partnering with the town of Gilbert and making this great town our home. With over 143 years in higher education and over 90,000 graduates, we're pleased to open the next chapter for the town of Gilbert, but also for Park University. In our short time here, we've employed 11 people with another six to eight coming in the next few months. With a projected enrollment of 300 by fall 2019, we're on the move. Thank you to the town and the community for the opportunity to locate in the Heritage District. So now we may have company. The University of Arizona has expressed interest to utilize the University Building. It is our belief that together we grow. No matter if we're perceived to be competitors, we grow. With the University of Arizona as a university of choice for many in Arizona and across the nation, we welcome them to Gilbert and to partner with the community, as Park has enjoyed. It is a sincere endorsement that we look to welcome the University of Arizona to the Gilbert community and hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. You couldn't have said it, I couldn't have said it better myself. So thank you for the commitment to partnership in the town. I've said a few times, the best and most important thing we can do is to build relationships. It's the only thing we get to take with us when our titles leave us. But it is those relationships and those individuals that we've connected with. So thank you for leading the way there. And I have no doubt the University of Arizona will be a tremendous partner as we all build higher ed in the community. So thank you. And with that, I think we can entertain a motion.
Well, Mayor, I will do that, but I do want to say that, as I said before when Park came, it's a humble new beginning. And to have our friends at U of A be part of that humble beginning, along with our partners at Park University, what a wonderful combination of partnership that we'll have in education here in Gilbert. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item, oh, excuse me.
Mayor, would it be okay to just say a couple of things real quick?
Please.
Fully support this, looking forward to the motion. And I hope they're so successful that one of them will be ready to buy the building. Because I just love where they're going. I've interviewed the leadership and talked to their plans, loved their plans, still holding the position that we want to get this off our books. And I hope they're so successful. I know they will be. Their plans are outstanding. I just finished a wonderful term on the State Board of Ed. We have 1.1 million students in the state of Arizona that we educate. Many, many of them are looking for nursing programs, and we just don't have that. A lot of those here in the East Valley have these premier high schools that do have solid biotech and medical programs. And just looking forward to serving the K-12 space more with this particular. In fact, you may, I know you know this, but Councilmember Anderson's wife is so key to helping thousands, tens of thousands of students with dual enrollment through Real Salado College. And so many of them sit in wait lists for one to two years for programs like this. And when we think of the benefit, Gilbert will tremendously benefit, probably more than other people, which is why I love it being here in our own town, because so many of them look forward to programs like this. And people in our town council and close to it work so hard, and yet they sit in wait lists. And we're now able to clear those off. So fully supportive of this and grateful for your work. And as long as we don't have bear down, I'm all in on this one. But thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to personally thank Jeff and Donna Erlich. You have come to town and just jumped in with both feet in Gilbert. Every event, meeting, wherever it is, I see you there, one or both of you. And I can say the same for your athletic director, Steve Wilson, and his wife Julie. I run into them all of the time. We actually met on social media, and I kind of helped him get acclimated into Gilbert, which was really fun. I love the relationship that we've built with you. I'm a firm believer in everything happens for a reason. And for some reason, what happened with our university happened so that Park University could be the first users in there. And now, tonight, I'm super excited to welcome the University of Arizona along with you to be your neighbors. I look forward to building a relationship with them. I don't know anybody from the University of Arizona, except for Jennifer Graves, I think. And I look forward to building that relationship like our mayor referred to. And I look forward to them having a long, long, long history in Gilbert and possibly in the future, buying that building. And I would love, love to do a tour of that nursing floor when we finally have students in it and working and studying, because it is just a premier place to learn to be a nurse, in my opinion. Thank you.
How wonderful, Mayor. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item 3A.
Second.
Councilmember Ray?
Yeah.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Thank you. We're glad you're here. I think the marketing plan gets launched tomorrow, right, to recruit students? Okay, we're in. Let us know how we can help. That moves us to Agenda Item 12.
Councilmember Taylor.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, thank you. This topic, just for those following, has to do with a proposed reduced fee for the Freestone Rec Center for town employees. And I thought a lot about this with the usage and certainly want to do everything we can. And I know that the town compensation and benefits package is very, very strong. It's very, very competitive. And so I think we do do great things. When I looked at the usage data, that's what got me to rethink what's going on here. Because certainly, there's been discussed, I've been a member of Society of Human Resource Management for probably over about 15 years. And the discussion and theory of wellness bending the curve is true. There's anecdotal data to it. If there was more usage, I think we would see that benefit happen. But I weighed that with just the inequity it would cause between the town, you know, regular, are we treating everybody fairly? Are regular citizens who are paying for this, they're going to wonder, why are we giving somebody a benefit that I don't get when I'm the one paying for it? And so because usage is so low, I think this is well-intended. But I don't think that we'll get the benefit that we need, just given the usage level. And I think the compensation benefit package as a whole is very, very competitive for our team. So I don't know that this is necessary. Maybe there's ways to tweak this, but we won't be supporting it as it's written tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
I take a little bit of a different approach, primarily because we are a self-insured organization. So any changes that we make to the wellness of our population, that's part of our health trust, I think there is a direction. part of our health trust, I think there is a direct benefit, so I might add to this that we, I would love to see us move forward with this, and perhaps in a year after we utilize and see utilization by our employees, that we come back and review that information and data and make sure that it's having the intended effect that we would want. And I think that's really where my thought process is, is we know that wellness programs, particularly when you're self-insured and your population is a little bit smaller than maybe some of the others who are grouped together in larger health plans, moving the needle actually changes behavior within our population, and I'd love to see us move forward with this. So aside from, you know, a small financial commitment, the way I read it was that essentially we break even, and so I'd like to see us at least try to do that through the wellness program. So that's my thought process on that.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item 12.
Second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. All right, that completes our consent agenda and moves us to our public hearing items. Are there any requests to speak on any of our public hearing items? Any requests from council? Okay, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 17 and 18. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Items 17 and 18 and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 17 and 18. Second.
Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. Nicole, I'm so glad we didn't delay this conversation any further. We're now at administrative item number 19, a presentation on the 2019 bike plan. I'm afraid if we delayed this any longer, you would be holding a baby.
That's allowed now, right?
It is allowed, you can bring your baby to work, but we're glad that you're here, and thank you for being patient with us. You are the priority right now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Let me just get this pulled up here. I was happy to wait because I thought it was a great micro mobility discussion we had, so. Let's see here. Okay, good evening, Mayor and council, and everybody watching on TV and in the audience. I'm Nicole McCarty from the Transportation Planning Division. I'm excited to be here to present the 2019 Bike Gilbert Plan. It is the first time we've had a Gilbert Plan, a Bike Gilbert Plan for 13 years, so it was a much-needed update. Sorry, the, there we go. Okay, so a little bit about the background of the project. We kicked this off in December of 2017. We did a lot of online research and online survey, open house in spring and the summer of 2018. We drafted the plan through the fall and finalized the plan in December, and again, we've been waiting to come to, present this to council. Some of the plan highlights is this document is supported by goals and policies found in our transportation master plan. We did have a lot of community and stakeholder involvement throughout the planning process. We also really focus on this being a data-driven process, and I'll get into that in a little more detail. A huge chunk of this plan is an existing conditions analysis, something that hadn't been done prior, and we really think that was an important first step to moving forward with the bike planning process. And as you'll see throughout the plan and throughout my presentation, is we really focus on safety. We think we're doing great things in Gilbert already with our roads, our streets, on our entire transportation network, but we're always looking for ways to add some enhancements, especially when they can relate to safety improvements. So just a breakdown of the plan, there is an introduction section, the existing conditions analysis, as I mentioned, a section on best practices where we dug into a lot of research on what's going on around the nation, around the world, what the best practices are for bike, and to create a bike planning toolbox to move forward. And then we came up with a moving forward section, which is really the implementation and how we're going to successfully improve biking and improve safety here in Gilbert. Oh, you are stuck, yeah. Let's see here. Sorry about that, you guys have been listening to me on slides that don't make sense. Let me try to close this and reopen it really quick. Okay, got through that slide. Okay, so the introduction, the purpose and vision statement of the plan really focuses on safety, improving bicycling as a form of transportation that our residents can safely and effectively and efficiently use here in Gilbert. In order to make sure this plan is successful, we really wanted to make it a short-term, like one to five-year goals, and have really set performance measures to track our progress in the plan, and not have it just sit on a shelf, have it be a living, breathing document that we can update and come back to you and let us, let you know how we're doing implementing this plan. So some of those performance measures relate to infrastructure, for example, the number of safety infrastructure projects that we can start or complete. Education, we could measure that by the number of community outreach efforts that we hold. Encouragement, the number of bike-related community events that we develop, which we do have some in the works that we're excited about. And then planning and research, and really this is just continue to collect data, continue to analyze ridership trends, implement the plan, and then unfortunately track the number of bike-related crashes and fatalities, those will still occur, but we're hoping to see those trends decrease as we implement the plan. So the existing conditions analysis covered what we have, which was an inventory of our On Street Network currently, what we know, which we summarized the Maricopa County Trip Reduction Survey, which is a survey that has gone out to employers in Gilbert with employees over 50, and analysis of bike crash data from 2016 to 2018. What we heard was a summary of our public outreach component, and what we discovered was the bike count data that we actually took ourselves in 22 different locations, and I'll show you that in just a minute. So here's a bike infrastructure inventory. This really shows our On Street Bike Lane Network, the canal paths that are paved and unpaved, and where we have specialized signage in town, so you'll see some of what we call Hawk crossings, the pedestrian hybrid beacons, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, there's all kinds of different crossings in town, so we've been trying to track where those are located. For the bike count collection, like I mentioned, we did 22 locations all throughout Gilbert. This is really to develop our first baseline of trying to study where people are biking and where they're using. We did a variety of canal paths and for intersections, side roads, we did a variety right now, but our goal is to continue collecting data in different locations going forward. We did analyze four days' worth of footage, including weekends and two weekdays. As a result of the bike crash analysis, which was very eye-opening, we actually dug into 90 different crash reports and really looked at how these crashes happen, really tried to get to the source of the problem, and we graphed these by crashes by time of day, but there's a lot of other ways we can use this data. We can do it by day of week, by month of year, but I just put on here the time of day. We average about 81 crashes per year. The fatalities are, have been two per year until last year, we dropped to one thankfully. And then the bar chart up at the top shows where the crashes are happening, and the highest level is the intersection with the crosswalk there, that large orange bar. Online survey, we had great response, 747 responses. We asked the, some general questions, one of which being overall, under current conditions, do you feel safe biking in Gilbert? And we did get a 50%, 56% yes. We'd like to see that higher, but we were happy that overall our residents who responded are, do feel safe biking in Gilbert. There was a little bit more who were unsure about letting their kids bike in Gilbert. In the online survey, we also asked factors that limit how often you bicycle in Gilbert, and top of the list, we see bad driving behavior, unsafe intersections, not enough bike lanes, and automobile traffic levels. So that really gives us an idea that people want to get off the street, they're concerned about the conflicts with drivers and vehicles, and that helps us kind of prioritize projects moving forward. The community open house, as I mentioned, was held in July. It was a workshop format, and it really, the feedback we heard just reinforced all of the survey results that we heard. Everyone really wants to focus on safety improvements and increase bike awareness, and a lot of discussion about education in the community. In terms of the bike planning toolbox, we separate them into three sections, various types of bike paths, signals and intersections, and pavement treatments, and I'm not going to go into all of these, but I did provide a few different examples. And just as a side note, this wasn't intended to be an engineering document, this is a planning document, so we tried to keep this high level. If we were ever to implement one of these tools, we would, of course, turn to our traffic engineers and to engineering documents to do that in the, you know, exactly appropriate way. But a one-way cycle track is an On Street Bike facility that's dedicated solely to bicyclists, and what I did for each of these tools is go through a list of benefits, areas where we would see them implemented, and a little bit of design guidance, and that, this will really help us just get a feel for what type of projects we want to do, and again, more research would be needed after that. Bike boulevards is another example. And in terms of implementation, we came up with a strategy, really this bike planning is not just going to fall in transportation planning, we have been working with PD closely, we've been working Parks and Rec and Trails, we've been working with Traffic Engineering and CIP, so we really want to move forward, continuing to work internally as a group to prioritize projects. Some of the factors we want to look at when we're analyzing how to prioritize bike planning projects would be the ridership trends, which is where that data comes in to use the bike ridership data. Traffic patterns in the area, if we have really high levels of traffic, high crash rates, site constraints, if this part of the road is on a place where there's a turn or a curve or a hill, not many hills in Gilbert, but infrastructure that's currently in place, so if there's already a trail there and there's already being used heavily, that might, you know, lift the priority a little bit. And then resident concerns, which we currently get calls all the time about requests for, we want a trail here, we want a pedestrian bridge here, we want a crosswalk here, so we hear that a lot, and we try to track those. And then project planning, so if there's already a bridge repair project going on in CIP, is there a way we can tap into that and get a signal there at the same time if it's at a canal? So we're constantly looking for how to prioritize projects and how to get our bike plan stuff The plan also has a list of priority action items ranking from urgent down to low. These items really kind of evolved throughout the bike planning process, and were reorganized, and they could continue to be reorganized, but I'll just hit on a few of them, and the goal categories vary, from education to infrastructure to planning and research. There's a lot of work to be done in bike planning in all of those areas. Top of the list for us is education campaign, we're looking to kick that off here in March, and we really just want to get out to all the road users, the drivers to look out for bikes, bikes to ride the appropriate ways, everybody work together to be safe on the roads, that's really what, you know, the gist of our campaign is going to be. Some of the other projects would be identifying and planning for future bike safety corridors, really looking, not just bikes, micro mobility, scooters, pedestrians. If bike lanes aren't the answer for all of those modes, we really might need to look at expanding our sidewalk network, our canal network, and so that's up on the priority list. And so our next step is just to, we've kind of started implementation, but we really wanted to come to you and get your, go ahead to do the implementation of this plan. We want to continue to identify funding opportunities through grants and other CIP projects, continue to work internally with our groups to prioritize these projects, and again, promote bike safety through social media campaigns and some events in March. Mayor, I'm hoping you'll lead us on a little bike ride in March to help promote it, so we've got some fun stuff planned. And that's it, thank you.
Awesome. I'd be happy to ride a bike through Gilbert. I actually ride a bike fairly frequently through Gilbert, my kids do too. Nicole, that's a tremendous presentation and the summation of a ton of work, so thank you very much, that's great.
Thank you.
I know we'll probably have some additional dialogue. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, if I could make two points, but first give thanks for all the people that did such great research on that. Like many people in Gilbert, you know, Saturday mornings is my time to go on a bike ride with Amanda, my seven-year-old, and that's just great bonding time, but, so definitely want to see this. I want to make sure that we're pro-bike and pro-car in this town. There's definitely feelings, and even as of this week, we've got these big initiatives of get rid of the cars, and you know, all this nonsense, and we can be pro-bike and pro-car at the same time. A lot of people will say, no, you need to be pro-bike and get rid of the cars and, you know, removing, and I hope we can be pro-bow, all of the above, and I think that's the approach here, which I appreciate. I like that, I like some of the creativity that's coming forward and how we're seeing a lot of that creativity and still preserving personal mobility of our choice, and I really appreciated that theme that came out. The only other thing I wanted to-
To clarify, the anti-car wasn't from the town, any town initiative?
No, 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 no.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, yeah, that was more of a national theme that came through. Thank you, Mayor. And the other thing, just on the point of, definitely wasn't. Definitely a theme in terms of budget is trail connectivity. That's always been very high in the priority. It came through in this report once again. What's so nice about that is it's a high priority for our community, but it's really a low-budget impact, and I love those things. Doesn't take a lot of money, but it sure benefits a lot of people in a lot of different ways, so maybe at the financial retreat or just another appropriate way, we can see how that's prioritized. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, I have two questions for you. And again, this is just questions where you might know or may not know, we may lean over to some folks on the CIP team. We have talked about the pedestrian bike crossing over the Union Pacific down at the Heritage District. Is there a date or time when construction of that will start, and so that we might let the public know where we might have that complete connectivity to happen?
Mayor Daniels and Councilman Cook, do you mean the pedestrian bridge over the train?
Yes.
Let me see if I'm getting, I'm looking at Dave to see if, I know it's been pushed out a little bit, but I don't want to say an exact date.
90% design right now.
Fantastic.
So it's getting close.
And I do know you mentioned and referenced that in a document. Second one, the individuals that use that eastern canal all the way through Chandler, through Tempe, all the way up to South Mountain, a lot of it is lighted.
Yes.
And I know we had talked about that. I did not see that in your report as one of the options or one of the requests from the public as it relates to having a lighted, no?
Yeah, Mayor Daniels and Councilman Cook, again, we did hear that theme a lot in the survey results. Part of the survey, and it's in the appendix, is also, I think, about 500 written comments, so we did go through all of those and sort those, and I think in some of those handwritten comments, we had the infrastructure, which was lighting. Our trail design currently does include lighting, although there are a lot of obstacles with that with the canal pass, with doing SRP easements and so forth, so it is something when we build trails, we are always looking to incorporate lighting in that, and we did hear from the community that they would like more. We know there are pieces where they come in from Mesa and all of a sudden hit dark Gilbert, and then go through Chandler and hit like Chandler, you know, so we want to, we want to make those regional systems safe and continuous, so that is something we'll definitely be looking, looking into.
Thank you, and I remember even chatting with the folks in Chandler. I think when you talk about the grants and availability grants, I know some of that was for them to take advantage of grants to, you know, provide that lighting along their trails.
Yes, we'll be looking into that, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, Nicole, sorry, you're not done just yet.
Just don't want to hover.
No, you're great. I, just a little bit of feedback, and that is that, as we've discussed, micro mobility, and as we're looking at the safest way to have multiple modes of transport be utilizing the same, we'll call it streetscape, in the safest possible way, that that, I think, from the council's perspective, is the highest priority. You heard us at the strategic retreat talk about finding better technology solutions to move vehicles more efficiently from one corner of town to the other. With that, we're not going to be adding additional lanes, but we would love to see a targeted approach to creating more efficient traffic throughout the community. That being said, and knowing that our speed limits are at 45 miles per hour, I'm going to continue to advocate that we do not have bikes and vehicles in the same roadway. I think comprehensively, that means we need a new plan, a new infrastructure design, and this is not a, let's get this done in two years or even five years, this is much longer than that, and as we discuss micro mobility and all of the changes that are happening with transportation, I think we really need to comprehensively look, not just at the bike plan, but at the micro mobility plan and at the long-term strategic effort as vehicles trans, transform from driver vehicles to driverless vehicles and autonomous vehicles and what that sort of looks like. We don't have crystal balls to know exactly how that's going to be, or what that's going to look like, but I really think that we need to start looking at our infrastructure and our streetscape design, and- and our streetscape design and challenge the status quo that we have in the town of Gilbert as it relates to that. So that's a much longer discussion than anything we would have here, but I, we want to be the city of the future, and that means we need to start talking about what infrastructure looks like. And because of the size of our landscaping setback requirements and our right-of-way, thankfully Gilbert's a very well-planned community, and we're all seeing the benefits of that. That also gives us some opportunities that some other cities don't have and allows us to make some changes, smart changes, and over a long period of time to address those needs. So I just kind of throw that out there as we continue to talk about city of the future. It's maybe a little bit of a challenge to, to our team, town teams, that we start thinking really innovatively about our street design and our pedestrian and multi-mobility piece. Councilmember Anderson?
Just a comment to support what the mayor's talking about. I think the research, the survey work that you did in the plan supports exactly what she's talking about. People don't feel comfortable with the current configuration of the bike lanes, and I think that separation is something they're looking for.
Virtual high five for Nicole. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're doing great work. All right. That moves us to agenda item 20, an acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the second quarter of 2019. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item 20.
We have a second by Councilmember Taylor. Please vote. Councilmember Ray? Oh, he had to get off. Okay, that carries with a six-o vote. Thank you. All right, that moves us to agenda item 21, a board's commissions and committee report. Anything from Council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, if I could just mention, we received an email about a tour of the Greenfield Wastewater Treatment Facility. The one down by the soccer field is actually a really great time. I know there, this plant is, the expansion is going underway, and it's actually open right now, and it's probably the only time that those of us that want to take a tour really will see the innards of that, because they're going to be sealing it up in about three months. And so the invitation at our last meeting last week was if anyone on Council wanted to see it, this is really a good time to see it, and so I'd be happy to coordinate that, or anyone can coordinate a tour there. It's, now's the good time. About three months, there's really not going to be all that much to see because everything's going to be furred in, but I thought I'd mention that. That came up at our last meeting, but thank you, Mayor.
Right, with no additional boards, commission, and committee reports, we move to our report from Town Manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, I've got, it's been a busy last couple of weeks. I've got quite a few people that I'd like to recognize for some of the great work they've done. Start with welcoming University of Arizona to our community tonight to join Park University with the great work they've already begun and have underway at the university building, but we're thrilled to have U of A join them, and I'd like to personally recognize Dan Henderson and Jennifer Graves in particular, who just did outstanding work on both of these endeavors that have now paid off, and we look forward to the continued growth and success of both universities in our community and all the value that they'll bring. And I'd also like to take this chance to remind Jeff again that I have two years of eligibility left for track and field, so if you need a utility runner on the team, you let me know. I think I've got one race left in me. Next, I'd like to recognize Robert Carmona for the great work with Cactus Yards. We had a kind of a soft event last Friday for the employees of the town and their families to come out and see the new facility and enjoy some of the new amenities that exist out there. It's been a big undertaking, as we all know and are all well aware, and the facility has turned out beautifully. And I also wanted to highlight that the $2.6 million for maintenance and repairs that the council authorized, we came in $600,000 under budget on that project. So great work, and I'd also like to recognize Jacob Ellis, one of our deputy managers, who was an integral part of that project and that success as well. It was great work, and the grand opening to the public is this Saturday from 4:00 to 8:00. I believe the mayor is throwing out the first pitch, which I, I got some reports of the practice.
That's a really generous statement about it being a pitch. It's not quite a, I wouldn't call it that.
But great work by Robert and his entire team, as well as Jacob Ellis. Also wanted to thank Dana Birchman and her entire digital team. It was another excellent digital state of the town, their best work yet, and every year. I wonder how they're going to top it, and they do, but that was just fantastic. So a wonderful evening as always, and great work by them. Also, we cut the ribbon on Deloitte's new U.S. Technology Delivery Center last week. We welcome them. It's my understanding the hiring is going extremely well out there. They anticipated 2,500 employees. They just let us know they're bringing another business unit out there. There'll be an additional 300 employees, so it looks like we're going to have 2,800 Deloitte employees in Gilbert, so another wonderful addition to our community. Lastly, I'd like to introduce the newest member to Team Gilbert, Shyla, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce her last name because I will murder it, but Shyla is our new Chief Innovation Officer, so if I can have her come down and introduce herself. She has hit the ground running. Most new team members do, but Shyla really has hit the ground running for us, so we're very excited with everything going on to have her on the team.
I was really intimidated by her whiteboard work.
Yes, yes.
Slash window.
Yes, she has used her window as a whiteboard.
Thanks, Patrick. Hello, Mayor Daniels and the rest of the Council. It's a pleasure to meet you. It's so exciting to be here. Yes, I, I come back to Gilbert, so I actually graduated from Gilbert High. My family moved here in '96, and then I went to, this might be the most divisive thing I say, ASU, where I graduated. Thank you. Went to Seattle after that. So I worked at Microsoft for four years, mainly in a finance M&amp;A role. Then I went to business school at Harvard Business School, and then I joined the startup scene in New York. And so my, the hats I've worn have kind of touched technology, finance, building companies, making things more efficient. And then I came back to Arizona. I worked in higher ed, worked with ASU after starting my own company, and now I'm just incredibly excited to join Team Gilbert. It's unbelievable what the team has done already, how well it's managed and led, and more so just how much the team has built an amazing ecosystem of opportunity. And I'm looking forward to kind of being the person at a town-wide level who looks at what are we doing well, who doesn't get in the way of the great work that's underway, but maybe takes a step back and looks at how we can drive more change and more opportunity for our town without spreading it too thin across the different departments, you know, seeing that speditification of, you know, a lot of wasted resources and really taking a step back and making sure that we deliver what we can for our town and our citizens and our employees. So couldn't be happier to be here, and I look forward to getting to know you all and working with you more in the future.
That was artful, Shyla. I think you know what I'm referring to, so...
I'm sorry, that one word, spaghettification, is that a word choice you used? Maybe we should...
We'll give you a dictionary, Patrick.
Improve our background.
And we'll help you find out what that really means.
Check process. I'm not sure. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor, I have to comment one more thing because I missed something. So Valerie is a graduate of U of A, Renee Guian is a graduate, Eugene's a graduate, Robert Carmona is a graduate. I had already said you, Jennifer Graves, and Assistant Chief Rob Duggan is a graduate of U of A. So I had to mention those people tonight because otherwise I'm getting a lot of crap on my phone.
Mayor, if I could add one more thing, I've never been part of a decision in which you instantly make half the organization happy and half the organization mad like this one.
Almost like being the mayor. Thank you. Report from Council on current events. Vice Mayor?
At the, you know, I have the pleasure of serving the chair on the MAGDV Council. Just to let everyone know, today, this month is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and the color is orange. So Robert, I may want to visit your team to maybe light the tower orange. I don't know what's available, but I'll come visit you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other report from Council on current events?
Mayor, I'll report that Valley Metro RPTA Board is now holding study sessions on a regular basis to make sure that we're covering topics that are pertinent and taking time to actually oversee those topics and digest those topics before we get to our meetings to make decisions on those topics. So I thought that would be of interest to you especially, and we'll have a discussion at our financial retreat on one of those topics.
Terrific. Thank you, and thanks for representing the town on that board. That can be a heavy lift, so thank you. Both of my topics were actually covered by the Town Manager. Just a reminder, the opening day for Cactus Yards is coming this Saturday. We're very excited about that, and again, thank you to that entire Parks and Rec team. In addition to maintenance, I, CIP, engineering, our town attorneys have been involved. I think it may have touched every single department in the town of Gilbert at this point, so thank you to everyone. And I know they've had a tremendous, I went last Friday, and the food was really good. I was really excited about the queso in particular, so I felt like it's worth noting. Yes, I think others tried that as well. And then also, the digital state of the town is available to all of our residents and anyone else who wants to view that on the town's website. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, stay tuned. There's going to be more announcements coming as we prepare to be the city of the future, and we're really excited about that process and the effort, the collective effort of this entire council. I call you all vision makers at our, at our state of the town. I mean that. It's going to take all of us collectively to ensure Gilbert's success in the future, and we're doing a lot of planning, most of which will never be noted or even seen, but we are creating opportunities for the future of Gilbert through that vision-making, and I'm really grateful for the team that we have on our council. So thank you to each of you. You guys are great. With that, meeting adjourned. Thank you.